This time I'd like to call the Alexander County Board of Commissioners into session. This is the seventh day of June 2021, and at this time I'd like to call in Vice Chairman Ronnie Reese, who will do the invocation, followed by Commissioner Jeff Peel, who will lead us to the pledge of allegiance. If you would please rise.
Let's pray. The Lord will come to you at the end of this meeting today, thanking you for the blessings you've given to us. I pray for each person that's traveled here, pray for safe return to them back to their homes and places of abode. Pray for all those who protect us each day, our law enforcement, fire, rescue, EMS, all of those protect them, guide and direct and all that's done there. Pray you protect our citizens of Alexander County. Thank you for all the good things you do for us and would be with us through this meeting that would make wise decisions that would move Alexander County forward. Thank you for all that you do, in Christ's name, pray. Amen.
If you would, join me in the pledge. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Gentlemen, the first thing on the agenda is the Commissioners' Report. Does any Commissioner have anything that they'd like to report on tonight?
Yes, sir. I was at the service at the Memorial Day Service at the courthouse. It was an amazing service, but there was a piece that was so striking because they weren't able to have it. Last year was the number of people that we've lost in two years. I don't remember now exactly what that number was.
Hundred and seventy-three.
I couldn't remember if it was a hundred and seventy-three or a hundred and eighty-three, but a hundred and seventy-three veterans in two years. So that's significant loss of some outstanding people and good people. But it was a wonderful ceremony, and I know everyone who was there, it had special meaning. So I was glad I was able to be there.
Very good. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I was in the meeting. Some of you may have been there as well, but I didn't have a child graduating this year, but my daughter, one of our daughters was junior marshal. So we attended the ACHS graduation, and it went well. I was, you know, I was impressed. The transport out of Central seems to have everything under control and, you know, had about 240, I think, graduate in a very exciting time. Those of you who don't know, there was a parade afterwards, the road through town, where basically, you know, kids sat on the roofs of their parents' cars, you know, out the sunroofs and all that kind of stuff. But last Friday night was a fun event.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else?
I was just going to say the same. Congratulations to all the graduates from Alexander County, and I'm sure a lot of the parents are glad that they've got a son that's graduated. As Josh said, I didn't have any. I'm waiting on some grandkids. They'll be coming through the school system to graduate. And along the same line, we're talking about veterans. You know, yesterday was 77 years since D-Day invasion. I'm sure there was a lot of death, a lot of things going on, but you know, that's why we can have the freedoms for our kids to graduate from school, freedoms that we can come here. You know, I thank all the veterans, any veteran who's here in this audience, my hat's off to you. I thank you for your service. Thank you for those listening. You know, let's never forget the price that was paid for what we have today. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I'll make mention that graduation did occur. There's a portion of those students that are going to be going off to colleges, whether local or abroad. There's also a large portion that's going to be staying home and going into trades or manufacturing or whatnot. So it'd be a great opportunity for those that are staying and for our local businesses to reach out to try to grab some of that new workforce that's coming into the area.
On Saturday night, I attended the program that they had in the basement of the Title of the Savings Loan that was put on was very well done and a lot of good music. And it was a pleasure to see those young people performing, recognizing the veterans and those who had given the ultimate sacrifice. A very good concert, and we appreciate what they're doing, and we appreciate everything that the veterans have done, those who made the ultimate sacrifice to let us be where we are today and to provide us with the freedoms that we all sometimes take for granted, and sometimes we forget what the sacrifices that those people made in making sure that we have what we have today. And those folks who suffered the most, that lost their lives, that their families suffered a tremendous amount of loss, and they lost someone in the wars that have preceded us to this day. So to them, to the families and to the military personnel, we appreciate what you've done and thank you for the sacrifices that you make for this country. That's an ultimate sacrifice that people make and one to be honored and respected. So thank you.
Chairman, if I could, please. 2000, I don't know, seven or eight, maybe somewhere in there, I was on the VetCom Committee, and we had an initiative with the high school where we did documentaries on those stories. So I'm not sure where they're housed at now, if they're at the library, or if they're at VetCom, or if they're at the school, or wherever, but there are some amazing stories that we've captured from some of these guys, some of them WWII, some Korea, and Vietnam, all the way through, but some amazing stories from firsthand perspective. If anyone's ever interested, they are very well done, and they will give you a whole new perspective on things that people have done so that we can have what we have.
And just to add to that, I think whenever this took place, the VA did that along with the Alexander County tech personnel there when they were doing those recordings and interviewed them. And it's one of the few times that you'd ever heard any of our World War II veterans speak out and talk about what actually happened to them when they were in combat. And it's very, very interesting. It's very touching if you get a chance to listen to it. Youtube.com/AlexanderCountyNC. Thank you, sir. So you can find those on YouTube, and it'd be very interesting to go back and take a look at those. Some very, very good stories. Very good stories that these folks went through. Gentlemen, you have the agenda before you tonight. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as is.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as given.
Second.
Motion is made. Second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Madam Clerk, I believe, on item number one, we do not have anyone signed up for public comment. All right. Thank you. Item number two, public hearing, rezoning case 21-2, Royal Comfort Properties. Seth Harris, zoning administrator, at this time, gentlemen, I entertain a motion to go for a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we open a public hearing pertaining to the rezoning case 21-2 for RCSI Properties Incorporated.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is made. Second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, sir. This is rezoning case 21-2. The applicant and property owner is RCSI Properties, also known as Royal Comfort Seating. Current zoning district is RA20 Residential Agricultural. Proposed zoning district is LI Light Industrial. The current land use is vacant, and the proposed use is manufacturing and storage. This is located on Aspaw Dam Road, consisting of 10.45 acres. Land uses within 100 feet include to the north industrial property currently occupied by Royal Comfort Seating. To the south is residential and agricultural property. To the east is vacant property and residential property, and then to the west is also residential property. All surrounding zoning districts are RA20, except for that property to the north, which is Light Industrial. So again, the applicant has applied to rezone 10.45 acres from RA20 to LI Light Industrial in order to construct a 37,500 square foot building for manufacturing and storage. Manufacturing and storage are allowable uses in the LI zoning district. So the 2008 Alexander County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map shows this area of the county as being commercial in nature. While not consistent with the map, it is within the intent of the Comprehensive Plan to expand industrial uses in those areas where they existed at the time the plan was adopted. The request is also consistent with the neighboring industrial use. Please note that all the uses allowed in LI district should be considered, not only the use for which the applicant is applying. Per our usual practice, letters were sent by first-class mail to property owners within 100 feet, and a sign was posted on the property, and a notice was put in the paper. Staff does recommend approval of the request based on being consistent with the intent of the 2008 Alexander County Comprehensive Plan, and on May 6, the Planning and Zoning Commission met, and they unanimously recommended approval of the request due to the same reason, being consistent with the intent of the 2008 Comprehensive Plan and compatible with adjacent uses. We have some maps here and a site plan, and the applicants are here with a more detailed site plan if you have more questions about that. Any questions for staff?
At this time, I don't believe. Is anyone, would you gentlemen like to speak?
I'd like a question.
Okay. All right. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? Okay. Anybody from the audience that would like to speak?
I'm excited that you're building the building.
Absolutely. There being no one from the audience that would like to speak, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing on rezoning case 21-2.
Entertained. Second.
Second.
Motion is made. Second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor of closing the public hearing indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, I entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve rezoning case 21-2 based on the request being consistent with the intent of the 2008 Comprehensive Plan and its compatibility with adjacent uses.
Thank you. Motion is made. And second, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. We look forward to your expansion. Love to see that happen in Alexander County, especially with local people doing it. That's great. Thank you. Yes, sir. Item number three, Alexander County Broadband Project Update. Nick Stewart? Oh, David Moose is going to do this. Very good, sir. David?
Thank you. We're going to tag team it. So we want to bring the board a brief update about the broadband expansion project here in Alexander County. This has been going on for just a little while now. We met, staff met on May 14 with Open Broadband staff and discussed the progress of the project, the work for Phase One. As you might recall, we've broken the project up into two phases. The work for Phase One is progressing. We have had a few delays. Primarily, that has been slow negotiations for a lease for a tower site on Moore Mountain, but there is progress moving forward on that. Open Broadband also has added three new hub sites, actually four, at the end of this week. There's another one going online. So they've added three new hub sites that are currently online, one on Rocky Face Baptist Church area, one in the Fairview Baptist Church area, and a residential hub off of Rocky Springs Road, I believe it is? Yeah, Rocky Springs Road. Open Broadband staff have also modified the distribution, the proposed distribution of equipment. Originally in the plan, they were going to add quite a bit of equipment to the Linnies Mountain, yeah, Linnies Mountain Tower. They've proposed to spread a little bit of that equipment out to some other tower sites to provide better coverage and just a little bit less loading on the Linnies Tower. Phase Two is still in final development stages. There are several tower sites that are being considered. Phase Two would provide service to the eastern and southeastern portion of the county. That area has been kind of a challenge because there's not a lot of, they're telling us there's not a lot of commercial tower sites available that are affordable to negotiate leases with. So they're trying to get creative and currently working on trying to locate some tower sites for that area.
What's the qualifications for a tower site?
Thank you, Commissioner, for the question. Essentially, we're looking for something that is elevated above the trees. We need to have line of sight from that tower to a number of residents. We like to make sure that there's at least 20 to 50 or so residents that can be served by a vertical asset. That way, we can make sure that the investment of equipment that we place on that tower is justified by the number of residents that will get connected.
That's a real challenge in the southeastern part of the county, getting an elevated spot, isn't it?
It is, sir. But like David mentioned, we're trying to get creative and got a couple solutions up my sleeve that we're cooking up now.
How high can a tower itself go to compensate the lack of elevation?
Some towers that I've interacted with are up to 300 feet. I don't know if there are any of that high or even required in the county for that, but about 150 feet is the usual height that we look for.
Thank you.
Sir.
And I apologize. I didn't introduce Nick. This is Nick Stewart. He's with Open Broadband. He's recently hired as the area manager for Western North Carolina, so he's kind of taken lead on this project moving forward. And all their staff has been great to work with. Currently, they have about 150 total customers on Open Broadband service. Now, that's a cumulative number from the pilot program moving forward. They don't have the data broken out from the pilot program versus the expansion we're doing now, but they're about 150, and a little over 50% of those are considered unserved. So that was our target demographic, if you would say, to try to get internet to those who didn't have any other options. And a lot of times, the challenge is that fiber optic cable is expensive to run, and there's not a lot of companies that have a lot of interest in doing that in rural areas that are sparsely populated. So companies like Open Broadband come in with wireless solutions, are able to fill that gap. One other thing I wanted to share is, brought a little graphic with us, there are some staff from Open Broadband that are in the area. They're going out and testing areas where they suspect they have service, and then they are notifying people, homes, who may be potential customers. And so citizens may notice a door hanger similar to this on their door. It gives very detailed instructions about whether or not they are eligible for service to be served by Open Broadband, and gives them instructions about how to contact the company to initiate service if they wish to. So just want the citizens to be aware, there are contractors in the area. They're working for Open Broadband, and you may see those door hangers on your door. And with that, we'll entertain any additional questions the board may have.
Are the vehicles, these folks that are going out, are the vehicles well marked?
Well, most of them are. That was one concern that was brought up. I think one particular person called into the sheriff's office and was suspicious, which is perfectly acceptable. We encourage that, to be suspicious of people because there are people out, you know, doing fraudulent things. But we spoke with Open Broadband. They are working on getting door magnets for all of their vehicles. So if that's not in place quite yet, it will be very soon. So they should be marked, and all their staff have been instructed to identify themselves as being with them.
And also, will they have a shirt on that says who they are? I mean, I hate to ask so many questions, but I just about guarantee that people call them like, you know, that car's here, but I don't see his name on there. And they like to say that it is who they say they are.
Yes, sir, absolutely. So we only have one vehicle currently that doesn't have vehicle magnets on it, and we're resolving that issue for that employee now. As far as shirts, that's something that we can also make sure that we do, either shirts or lanyards.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
I just wanted to take a moment, if that's okay, to introduce myself as well. I'm the new area manager for this part of North Carolina, also new to the state, but not new to the industry. I've been working in wireless internet space for about seven years now, in Maryland, in Africa, and here in North Carolina now. So look forward to getting a lot of people in your community connected, and I've enjoyed spending time up here. I live in Charlotte, but I'm usually here two or three days a week. So I've enjoyed being up this part, enjoyed Rocky Face. Looking forward to taking my wife out there one day to go hiking, but beautiful county that you guys have here.
Welcome to North Carolina.
Thank you.
Well, you know, Maryland, Africa, and Alexander County are a lot alike.
They are. Lots of mountains, lots of trees, lots of things to navigate, creative solutions to get people connected.
And I really like the term you used, "vertical asset."
Yes, sir.
That sounded very...
Windmill, water tank, tower, steeple.
Vertical asset sounds very professional and even, you know, Hollywood-esque.
Thank you.
I got a few questions real quick.
Yes, sir.
Not sure which one to answer, but are we bouncing, for folks that have been turned down for signal quality, I would assume, are we bouncing any signals from the main pods to those locations, or have the ability or not?
So if someone is not currently eligible to receive service, we do take a look around them and say, what residents or businesses are near you that might be able to serve you? The issue that we run into is if your house is completely surrounded by trees and you can't see anyone, that's going to be a tough one for us to navigate. But in addition, as we add extra hubs and continue moving through phases, we take a look at those addresses before. Our goal is to get as many people connected as possible, especially if we know they want our service because they've reached out to us. So it's tough when we tell them we can't yet get them connected, but we're always double checking and verifying.
Is there a possibility if someone's been turned down the service because of the signal quality or whatnot, and the new sites are going up, should they reapply or not?
They can't, they're more than welcome to.
Overlapping areas possibly?
They're more than welcome to. What I've done over the past couple of months is, if someone has requested service and I found that we couldn't get them connected because their signal strength wasn't strong enough, once we've put up sites like Rocky Face Baptist Church, for example, I've had those houses gone out and retested, and we've had two or three even last week who weren't able to receive service before, who are now connected.
All right. One more question?
Yes, sir.
Now I'm full on right now, but as far as, do we have a backlog of installs waiting to happen?
We do. So typically, I'll schedule installs about a week out. I know that we have two confirmed on Thursday and a new hub with two or three other residents that'll be fed on it Thursday and Friday that we're playing with. One of those installs was pushed from last week. The customer had wasps nests that they're spraying for. So once that gets sorted, we'll get them connected.
Yeah, thank you.
Sir. Any other questions?
We're glad to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Keep working.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number four on the agenda tonight, Alexander County 2021-2022 Budget Ordinance. Mr. Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packets, you have a copy of the 2021-2022 Budget Ordinance for Alexander County. The information and numbers follow the public meetings and hearings that we've had. There are three fee increases, one involving water rates going up 3% increase in both C and D and MSW. It's proposed for landfill, and fee changes are recommended from EMS management and consultants, as we discussed in our public meetings. I think everything else is, I'll say, normal, but runs along the similar lines as in the past. But this is our budget ordinance for next fiscal year. So we'd like to try to answer any questions.
Mr. French, if you don't mind, the total budget for this year versus the total budget for last year, if you just let the folks know what that was?
It's $45.9 million. Last year was right at $43 million.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, does anybody have any questions? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the 2021-2022 Budget Ordinance for Alexander County.
Make a motion to approve the 2021-2022 Budget Ordinance for Alexander County as given in our report.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, is there any further discussion at this time? If not, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. Thank you very much. And Ms. French, I want to say to the staff and to everyone involved in doing this budget this year, I do appreciate the work that's gone into it because there's a lot of different things that were coming to play in this budget. And the fact that, yes, we have some things that did go up, you know, and even though those are not a property tax, they're still basically a tax, but we had no property tax increase in Alexander County this year, and our county continues to remain in good financial standing, and the staff and this board has done a very good job of making sure that there was no tax increase. And for that, I want to say thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Item number five, county sales tax revenue for 2020 and 2021 budget year. Mr. French, county manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. As we've been talking about with the sales tax reports, regular sales taxes are running ahead of schedule so far in this fiscal year, which is, you know, our sales taxes run behind a few months. So through the end of February, we have collected $4,609,000. We budgeted $4,925,000. We've collected almost 94% of the budget through 75% of the year. That's almost 19% increase over last year. The new sales tax is running a little differently, but that's more by design. So far this fiscal year, we've collected $1,267,000. That's 86% of the budget collection, which again, we're 75%, and we budgeted $1,486,000. It's an almost 4% increase over last year, but we'll take that too.
Absolutely.
I'll be glad to answer any questions about sales taxes. Mr. Chairman and board.
Well, thank you, Mr. French. We appreciate the report, sir.
Yes, sir.
Item number five, excuse me, item number six on the agenda, board appointments and reappointments. Mr. French, county manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Appointments, Historic Preservation Committee, reappoint Helen Chestnut and Lee Sharp for three years. CVCC Board of Trustees, reappoint John Watts for four years. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, appoint Kathy Riddle, Jason Hughes, Ashley Moretz for two years. Reappoint Chris Bowman, Krista Hyatt, and Ronnie Reese for two years, and appoint Ethan Grant, our review officer. And once you make that motion, we also need to approve the accompanying resolution that designates him the review officer.
Very good, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, I entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion that we approve the appointments as stated.
Motion's made. Have a second?
Second.
Motion's made. Second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your hand. All opposed likewise, the motion carries. And at this time, gentlemen, I'm going to read the resolution in the form of a motion. Resolution requesting the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to appoint a review officer for Alexander County. Whereas SL 1997-309, paragraph AS875, made a number of significant changes in the procedures for recording maps and plaits, and whereas the main purpose of the law is to transfer the responsibility for reviewing plaits to determine whether they meet recording requirements from the register of deeds to the review officer, and whereas in a general statute 47-30.2 requires the Board of County Commissioners in each county by resolution to appoint a person or persons to serve as review officer to review each plat before it is recorded and certified that it meets the North County... and certified that it meets the North Carolina statutory requirements for recording. And whereas it is the desire of the Alexander County Comor, Board of Commissioners to ensure review of all maps and plaits as required by GS General Statutes forty-seven dash thirty point two before they are presented to the register of deeds for recording. Now therefore be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners does hereby appoint Ethan Grant to perform all responsibilities of, as required for the review officer under appropriate North Carolina General Statutes for the Alexander County planning area, adopted this the seventh day of June twenty twenty-one, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number seven, Budget Ordinance Amendments, number eighty-three through number eighty-seven, and Grant Project Budget Ordinance P eight three, Mr. Rick French, county manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first, I want to mention that in your packet you have the Grant Project, uh, Budget Ordinance for the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. The copy in your packet, uh, has been changed, and you have a new, uh, copy, uh, and the new copy has, uh, the American Rescue Plan funds to be used a hundred percent for water infrastructure expenses, and that's in line with the legislation that's going on. So, we'll, we'll talk more about that, but that's where we'll, we're, we're asking you to start, is at that point. And I'll be glad to answer questions about that. Um, we also have four, we have, uh, several budget amendments, eighty-three through eighty-seven. Uh, budget, budget amendment eighty-three is to budget for payouts of vacation, holiday, comp time through May of twenty twenty-one for employees leaving during the twenty twenty-one year. Eighty-four is to increase the EMS budget for estimated administrative fee to be paid to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners for the annual Medicaid cost report, and to increase the contingency and reduce fund balance appropriated based on the sales tax revenue projections for the rest of the, the budget year. Budget Amendment Number eighty-five is the budget for transfer of Article forty-four, the new, the, uh, sales tax funds for the general fund to, uh, County Water and Sewer Fund to pay debt service for the water project, uh, and debt service began in May of twenty twenty-one. That's for our new water project, uh, a portion of this article, sales taxes, sales taxes were received in a prior year, prior year, and represented by fund balance appropriation for this budget amendment. Budget Amendment Number eighty-six, um, if I can get my fingers to work, is to budget for DSS Representative Paye Fund, which is a social security program where the county DSS receives and manages money for minor children and certain adults. The receipts and disbursements were previously accounted for in another fund type, uh, that did not require an annual budget. Due to a change in national accounting standards, the money must be budgeted and accounted for in either the general fund or special revenue fund. At this time, the county has chosen the budget for the DSS Representative Paye Funds and the general fund. And number eighty-seven is to budget for the fines or forfeitures received by the county, which are required to be remitted to the local Board of Education. And I'll be glad to answer any questions about the budget amendments or the project amendment. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, does anyone have any questions?
Mr. French, just a question on number eighty-six. That hundred ninety-six thousand dollars, that comes from somewhere else, and we're just accounting for it.
That's right, yes, sir.
Might just want to make that clear. That, that money has been sent to us from other sources, and we, so...
Yes, sir.
Purely an accounting thing.
It is.
At this time, gentlemen, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Budget Ordinance Amendments eighty-three through eighty-seven, um, as stated by county manager.
And the...
The Grant Project?
And the Grant, yeah, and the Grant Project.
Order, second. The Grant Project Budget Ordinance P three. Uh, the motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number eight on the agenda, other business, county manager's report, Mr. French.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a couple of things to mention. In your packet you have some information about the news about Vaya Mental Health and Cardinal's innovations, the merging of those two, uh, entities, LME MCOs. At this time, it appears that fourteen counties from Cardinals, or Cardinal, are going to join Vaya's twenty-two counties. Uh, this is going to take some time to work, work through this, uh, but the merger, the merger will actually take place in July first of twenty twenty-two. Also, you have two house bills in your packet, oh, well, have, you have one in your packet and one that we gave to you, passed out to you. Uh, one is for the broadband, uh, program that's being set up by the state, and the other is something that we talked about at our last meeting, which is, uh, a bill for, uh, to create a state building code permit, tech, technician certification for employees that work in building inspections. Also, we, this week, we had our meeting with Lail Builders, uh, no relations to Josh, uh, starting soon at Courthouse Park. Uh, that project will take approximately a hundred and twenty days to complete, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I have some things for closed session, though.
Very good, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Question. Go ahead.
No, sir, you go ahead. You start.
On the Courthouse Park, what is the groundbreaking day?
We don't have it set yet.
Okay.
Mr. French, with Vaya Health and Cardinal Innovations, um, it, I, I know it's nobody's fault at the table, but it really seems like there's a big transformation every year or every two years, and how, how does the state expect people to get set in any kind of consistency when this happens so often?
That's a great question. I don't really know the answer to that. I've been involved with it for some time. Um, I think it makes it confusing, but, um, under the circumstances, what's happened over the years is, at one time, there were over thirty LME MCOs, and now they'll, after this, there'll be five.
That are any more efficient than we was when we were thirty?
I think so, but, uh, one thing the state has allowed to happen is for counties to pull out and, you know, want to join someone else, and that causes disruptions in that, in the LME MCO. And, for example, in Cardinal, um, Mecklenburg County pulled out, uh, Forsyth County pulled out, and they joined o- other LME MCOs, which caused a ripple effect. And so, five, I think five counties, maybe six, actually went other places, which caused Cardinal to, I mean, they eventually, um, I'll say, will merge with Vaya. That's the best way to say it. So, um, and we've asked the state on numerous occasions to have a different process, so they just can't so, I'll say, so easily pull out. There's, everybody has their reasons, but a lot of times, it, it doesn't seem, um, I'll say, as responsible as it should be, because it's confusing the clients, the consumers, and the family members. It's very confusing to them. They don't know, they, you know, I won't say they don't know what's going on, but it does make it confusing for them.
Well, then it just upheavals the whole DSS department as well.
Right.
I mean, you, you can't get any solid, it's like you're in quicksand all the time, and, and you almost start, stop sinking, and then you get filled in more quicksand.
I, I've recently attended, uh, Vaya has a seat, has several CFACS, which are the Consumer and Family Member Advisory Committees, and a couple of times a year, all three of those groups get together, and there was a lot of concern from members about what's going on, especially now. Um, you know, it's, it's not only the merger part of, there's just so many other parts of this, um, that makes it difficult for, for, um, those consumers and those clients to understand the programs that are being offered to them.
And the service to the person who needs it gets lost in all the conglomeration of mess.
It also puts a lot of pressure on our DSSs and our health departments, um, and it, and it's just something we have to do a better job at, at educating people on what they need to do. Um, so, anyway.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's one of the, that's one of the big drawbacks on mental health, trying to get healthy. Nobody really knows where to go or what to do anymore.
Right.
And it's been this way for last fourteen years, it seems like, or longer.
Well, it's, it's sort of been at different stages, and you're, but you're right, Mr. Chairman, you're right.
It's been something all along.
It has.
Anybody else have any questions? Uh, the consent agenda?
I consent.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as given in our package.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second, uh, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Uh, at this time, uh, we will go into adjournment and go into a closed session under North Carolina General Statutes one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, paragraph A, subsection four, five, and six, economic development contractual and personnel. We will re-adjourn for the primary purpose of adjournment only, and we will not be taking any action whatsoever. Thank you. I entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we go into closed session.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Third.
All in favor?
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Man.
Thank you.